Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning Commission for January 7th, 2021 to order. Our first order of business is to elect officers for 2021. Does anyone have a nomination for chairman or chair?
I'd like to nominate Francis Kungu for chairman.
Francis, do you accept that nomination?
I do. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And our next nomination would be for vice chair. Does anyone have a nomination for that?
I nominate Fergal Brady to be our vice chair.
And Fergal has told me that he would accept the nomination. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And I'll turn the meeting over to our chairperson. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome to this first meeting of 2021. I'm honored to be nominated and voted again to be chair for the Planning Commission. It's been a wonderful 12 years now. Since 2008, I've seen a lot of growth in the city and a lot of faces come and go in the Planning Commission. I think three of them are now in council. So there seems to be a good place to start, to go to higher office in the city. But I, and I know everybody here takes this very seriously. It's really shaping the future of Alpharetta. And as I always say, there is a reason this city is as good and as good a place to live in as anywhere in the world because our staff here in community development do a very good job. And the Planning Commission and council and our citizens do a very good job to protect the character of our city. So as we deliberate throughout this year, I make the commitment to be as objective and to do what I believe is in the best interest of the public and it's fair and reasonable for applicants. And so I pray that we'll govern ourselves in that manner. And I also congratulate Fargo for his nomination and into the chair position. So welcome, everybody in the audience. We don't have many people on this first Thursday of the year. And so we have three items on the agenda. One has been deferred by staff. That is MP-20-03/CU-20066Z3, North Atlanta Church. But before we consider the three items, we need to consider the minutes from the November 5th, 2020 meeting. What is the desire of the board?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second. A motion has been made and proper executive or in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. The first item on the agenda is CU-20-08 Peach Coffee Roasters/Henderson Commons. And Michael Woodman will be presenting. Michael?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to be recused from this item due to real estate matter.
You can't be recused. You recuse yourself.
Okay, okay. You're recusing myself? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You can't do it to me.
I can't do it to you.
Thank you, Chair and Planning Commissioners. The first item before you this evening is a conditional use to allow Peach Coffee Roasters to operate a restaurant with drive-through in a 2,000-square-foot building on an out parcel in, or 2,000-square-foot suite on an out parcel in the Henderson Commons Shopping Center. The use requires approval of a conditional use in the C1 district. And when I say the use, specifically the drive-through. Restaurant would be allowed in the C1 district. It's the drive-through that requires the conditional use. I have the overhead, the location map on the overhead. The subject property is located at 735 North Main Street. It's near the southeast corner of North Main Street and Henderson Parkway. To the north, that's Cogburn Parkway, Cogburn Road, sorry. Surrounding properties are Zone C1 Neighborhood Commercial to the north, east, and west, and CUP Community Unit Plan to the south. Addington Place Assisted Living Facility is located to the north. Advance Auto Parts to the west. Montessori School to the east, and the Somerset at Henderson Village subdivision to the south. Henderson Commons is approximately 33,000 square feet. Shopping center on 8.6 acres. It was developed in 2008. Businesses occupying the shopping center include lumber liquidators, leather creations, and title boxing club. Conditional use was approved in 2019 to allow Dunkin' Donuts with a drive-through at the Stonewood Village, which is catty corner from the site. If you remember, it was right here at this corner. This property is located within the Highway 9 LCI. That's a joint LCI with the city of Alpharetta and Milton. It has a vision to improve walkability in the area and overall character of the area. The area has several retail developments that are underutilized and underperforming. In general, the drive-through restaurants do not promote walkability. However, the coffee shop with drive-through will generate fewer trips than the typical fast food restaurant. And they are also incorporating a patio and green space into the development, which will promote walkability. Of course, this is also near residential as well. Peach Coffee Roasters currently has one location in Johns Creek. The business roasts their coffee beans onsite and offers packaged coffee and frequently changing food menu. Hours of operation listed in the application are Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The applicant indicates that, or anticipates between 9 and 12 employees. Public hearing application states that the drive-through is essential for this business as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. So this is the center here, and this is the out parcel that the coffee shop, the building that would contain the coffee shop would be located at. The applicant also does have plans to locate another building on this out parcel, but that is not part of this application. This is just a street view, so Highway 9 looking into the development. The Advance Auto Parts is here, so the coffee shop out parcel is approximately in this location. And you can see the existing center sits far back from the road. Here's a site plan. So this is the existing center, the parking lot. The Advanced Auto Parts is over here on another parcel. So these are the two out parcels on the property currently. Some of it's green, some of it's parking. And the applicant is proposing two new buildings here. Again, the coffee shop would go into this building and it would occupy 2,000 feet of the 4,200-square-foot building. And it does show a drive-through window for the coffee shop here. Staff estimated that the use would generate 178 a.m. peak hour trips and 87 p.m. peak hour trips. This item was presented to the public at the October 14th Community Zoning Information Meeting, and there were no public comments. Staff has reviewed the proposal and finds that the conditional use is not in conflict with the established criteria. The proposal should not have significant impacts on surrounding properties. Promoting walkability, of course, along North Main Street is a goal. Therefore, a drive-through should be carefully considered based upon traffic generated as well as supporting restaurants with outdoor space. This is a local coffee shop with drive-through, which is going to generate fewer trips than your, than a fast food restaurant. And as I mentioned before, this location does incorporate green space and outdoor space. So there's a green space at the back here and their outdoor patio on the front. With that, staff is recommending approval, subject to the following conditions. Condition one, restaurant with drive-through window shall be added as a conditional use at 735 North Main Street, Building A, and limited to no more than 2,000 square feet. Before I go into those other conditions, I forgot one other exhibit that I wanted to show you. This is a color rendering of Building A, the building that the coffee shop would go into. And this is a rendering that the applicant provided with a design review board submittal. Sorry, back to the conditions. Condition two, conditional use approval shall be limited to Peach Coffee Roasters. No additional restaurant with drive-through window use or subleasing shall be permitted on the approved out parcel. Three, buildings shall be substantially like this, substantially similar or like the submitted architecture and materials with final approval by DRB. New buildings shall be non-painted brick with final approval by DRB. Four, drive-through lane shall be screened along its east side with a row of taller growing evergreen shrubs such as hollies or tea olives. And I just want to show you where I'm referring to. So this is the drive-through lane. So there is a strip, there's a grass strip between that drive-through lane and parking spaces within the development. So we're talking about planting evergreens along this strip. A car passing by, you're never going to completely screen the drive-through from the road, but a car passing by here would not see that driveway, drive-through until they're right dead-on with it. So the intent is to at least provide some screening on this side to help screen that. Five, outside speakers shall be, shall not be audible from off-site properties. As you recall, with the Dunkin' Donuts across the street, there was, let's see if this shows it. So the Dunkin' Donuts was proposed right here on this out parcel. And you can see there's no buildings between where that Dunkin' Donuts was to the nearest residential development. So there were some additional concerns with regard to the noises coming from the drive-through. On this site, you can see this building, the existing building, actually blocks the drive-through from the adjacent residential. But we included condition five because that is typical of a conditional use condition for a drive-through. Six is the hours of operation that I mentioned earlier. Seven, pots planted with ornamental trees and shrubs of various sizes and colors shall be provided along the frontage of the main shopping center building. Pot shall be of a material and color that is compatible with the shopping center with final approval by DRB. That is specifically referring to the existing building on the site. This building was painted. It's a brick building with a low water table, stone water table, and the brick was painted white, and it was done without DRB's approval. So the idea with condition number seven is to address that, that particular issue on the property, is we feel that the potted plants will help soften the look of the building. And the applicant does have some photographs of what that building looks like today. Eight, developers shall assess and replace any dead, dying, or missing required landscape material on the site. Nine, developers shall provide a pedestrian connection from Highway 9 sidewalk to the front door of the business, including adequate striping through the parking lot as approved by staff. And ten, developers shall make accommodations for the GDOT Highway 9 project, including right-of-way and permanent and temporary easements. The landscape strip along Highway 9 shall be accommodated with the GDOT Highway 9 project, and required landscaping removed as a result of the project shall be replaced at project completion. So that's Highway 9's streetscape project. They're adding wider sidewalks along this section of Highway 9. I did look at this section, GDOT's plans, as it relates to the frontage of this property with our traffic engineer, Eric Graves, and there are minimal impacts to this site. It's not near the impacts that the Dunkin' Donuts had on their frontage. And that concludes the presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you for your presentation. I noticed there are markups, and I assume these are from the applicant?
Yes.
On the zoning conditions. Have you looked at these, their comments?
Yes, I, when we sent these over, I did provide my, my response to the applicant's markups, both to the applicant as well as when we sent them to the Planning Commission. Would you like me to go over what staff is, is comfortable with, accepting?
I think the inappropriate time to do that.
So let me get the applicant's markups, and we'll put those on the overhead. The applicant is not proposing any changes to one on two. Staff cannot support the proposed change to two. We always, on a conditional use, it's always limited to that specific business it's going through. Condition three, staff can support the change to the first sentence and the added second sentence. However, we cannot support the deletion of the last sentence. Condition four, staff can support first change but cannot support the second change referencing the exhibit. We do not believe that four six-foot evergreens will be sufficient to screen that drive-through area, and we believe that that should be up to DRB. They have the expertise on that board to make sure that the proper screening is there. No changes proposed to five. Condition six, staff cannot support the change to the closing hours. And the reason typically, we always put the hours of operations that are listed in the application. And we're always willing to be flexible if there's any, if there's changes from the applicant. However, there are residential property, properties directly behind the shopping center. I did do, when we received the requested change to condition number six, did a quick Google search. Starbucks in most smaller cities close at 6:00 p.m. The only Starbucks that I found that stayed open later was in New York City till 11:00 p.m. So the applicant's request to stay open till 11 and 12 o'clock, I just felt like that was a bit excessive. I understand the flexibility needed, but as proposed, we didn't support those changes. Seven, staff cannot support the, the change as proposed to seven. We believe the approval should remain with the design review board, especially since the main center was painted without approval by the design review board, and we felt that that was up to them to approve. Condition seven as written.
Before you proceed, what is the city's recourse for the painting of the building?
Well, technically, we could send the applicant back to the design review board, and, and the design review board could enforce, they could make them sandblast the paint off the brick if that was what they had decided. The applicant did attempt to go back to design review board in the middle of, you know, closer to the initial shutdown with COVID, and they weren't able to work through those issues with DRB. Since this application was coming in at the same time, we felt this would be a good opportunity to put a, place a condition to resolve this issue. So that's why we're not, we're not comfortable with the way that the applicant is proposing to address seven. We feel that that should just be up to design review board.
Okay.
No proposed changes to eight and nine. We're, we're fine with the change to condition 10, and we are okay with the addition of condition number 11, as it's written with the code-compliant monument language.
Michael, could I ask real quick, as it relates to number, I guess it's number six. Do you recall, which is the hours provision? Is that similar or different than what we approved with the Dunkin' Donuts across the street?
Dunkin' Donuts gave us, listed specific hours in the application, and that's what was listed in the condition.
Okay. Thank you.
Michael, what is the status of the Dunkin' Donuts? Do you have any idea?
I know they were in for DRB. I believe they were approved. I'm not sure, Kathy, do you happen to know, or Ellie, do you recall?
It's been a while. I just was curious.
I mean, they went through DRB. I just don't know where it's been long, long from there.
Yeah. They, they were approved at DRB. We're just not sure. They may have some delays because of COVID, possibly.
They did.
They did? Okay.
Just one other quick question. So I'm just trying to think, so when cars come out the drive-through to exit, will they, will they be able to go directly on a Highway 9, or do they have to go over to Henderson Parkway and then go to the light?
So there's two, there's multiple access points to this subdivision. So the drive-through, the cars come around to this point, so they could come out, there's a, there's a point of access here. There's a point of access here. Or they could come around through the drive-through and, and exit on Henderson Parkway.
Okay. So could they, could they potentially pull out and try to go south across? I mean, I, that is such a bad stretch of, of highway right now. I'm just, I'm just curious, another access point, or is that already in use? And so it's not adding, but it's adding another 200 cars a day onto a, to me, a pretty tight...
So these, these curb cuts are already in use today. These are here.
So you're not concerned about that additional traffic, then?
No. Eric did review this, and, and he felt that this would actually be a lower traffic generator than, you know, if it was a fast food restaurant. He was, he was comfortable with the trips that were being proposed.
All right. And then just a real quick question with the developments of Highway 9?
Mm-hmm.
How, is there a center lane median still there, or?
I, I don't know the, all the specifics of, of what is being proposed. I know the main piece of the Highway 9 project are the larger sidewalks along both sides of the project. They are doing some roadwork with respect to turn lanes, but I'm not sure. I believe that the center median is being, you know, that that's being maintained. I don't know that they would remove something that provides, you know, that helps enhance traffic flow.
I know it is, it's gotten so bad in that area. There's a couple of, there's a couple of turn lanes that you can, but it's gotten to the point, like if you go to, you, you basically have to go the backways to come out onto it because you're just playing, there's like five lanes sometimes across if you're trying to.
I would imagine, the good thing about this center is that they do have the three points of access, so there's options. So, you know, if, if, you know, if people are having trouble getting out at these locations along Highway 9, they'll probably just...
Just go out to Henderson.
Go out to Henderson and take the light.
Hey, Michael, on the hours of operation on number six, were these set up by the applicant or the staff?
The, in this, the hours of operation in the staff report are...
Yeah, the 7:00 a.m., the 6:00 p.m. Did, did they make that up, or did...
That was what the, the applicant listed in their application. Yes.
Yeah, it mentioned it's the same hours as their place in Johns Creek.
Yeah, that's, that's the Johns Creek hours.
Those are the Johns Creek hours.
We wouldn't necessarily have any concern about the applicant amending some of the hours. I just felt like there was maybe a little bit too much flexibility that was being proposed in the applicant's markup.
I have a couple more questions. One is on condition number 10. The, it read developer shall make accommodations for the GDOT, but the applicant proposes to rewrite, the developer shall reserve right-of-way. And I will ask the applicant to explain that because the right-of-way is publicly owned land. Can either donate it. I don't know what reserve means. So have you thought about that?
I mean, we were fine with, with the applicant's change to that. The intent of our condition is that the applicant's proposed site plan work with the GDOT project and that they make accommodations to provide any necessary right-of-way. Again, I did look at the GDOT project against this project with Eric Graves, and there were very, very minimal impacts with respect to right-of-way needs that would apply to this shopping center. We're talking a matter of maybe a couple feet and, and, and no right-of-way in, in some areas along the frontage. It was very minimal.
Okay. I will make a recommendation for amending the language when we get to it.
And in this, and they do have the required 20-foot landscape strip on the front of this shopping center currently. So that was our main concern, is that once these larger sidewalks go in and they do this project, that we're not going to lose that landscape strip. If you remember from the Dunkin' Donuts, that was our big concern over there as well because they had a lot of right-of-way that was going to need to be dedicated on that site, and it was basically removing that full 20-foot of, of landscape strip. Here, here it's, it's quite different.
The next question I had is the coffee shop is going to be part of a building, a building that has other users?
Correct.
Is, are cars going to be driving in front of the building as they access the drive-through or as they come out of the drive-through?
Yeah, there is a, there is a drive aisle along the frontage of this property. Yes.
Can, can you put that exhibit? I believe it's what they're referring to, exhibit B.
Oh, the applicant's exhibit B?
Yeah, you had it, you had it on the screen during your presentation. It's like a clothing store.
Yeah, it's the next one.
Oh, this, this.
That's it.
Yeah, I think these, they knew, they put coffee on here. I don't know that this is what they're, they're proposing for these other tenants. I think these are just placeholders. They just knew at the time that these drawings were done that they, they had already signed a lease with the coffee shop.
Now, will cars be driving in front here to access the drive-through? Was my question.
Yes. This is a drive aisle in front of this building, and they would, they would either be accessing, well, let's go back to the site plan. Cars that come in from this curb cut would not be going in front of the building. They would go along the side of the building to access the drive-through. This is where the drive-through begins. But if, if a car happened to turn in here and needed to come back to that drive-through, of course, they would be coming in front and then winding around. Of course, you're, if you're at Henderson, you're just accessing from this point.
This may be a question for Eric, any concern about public safety for people shopping or using the other stores? Does cars are driving around in front of a drive-through?
Sure. And that's, and, and we do, you know, one of the conditions was to provide a connection between the front door of this building and the public sidewalk out here with the striping through the parking lot and across that drive aisle. But I can assure you, Eric is part of the review team for this. In fact, he always recommends that, that, that connection through the parking lot in connection to the sidewalk. He did not mention that he had any safety concerns in that area.
And that's it for me. Any further questions?
I just have a quick, can you just explain, you did not, you did not support, I believe, number two? Just tell me why. What was, what was staff's reasoning on not to support the applicant's proposal?
Let's see where here was number two.
I think it regards subleasing.
Let's see, condition number two. Okay, so on condition number two, the reason why we do not support that is because the way the applicant is proposing to delete the limitation to Peach Coffee Roasters and just allow the conditional use approval for a restaurant with drive-through window to be limited to the building indicated on the site plan. So what, what they're proposing is that if Peach Coffee Roasters goes away, that, you know, a fast food restaurant could come back in if, if it's approved the way that the applicant has it written.
Okay. And it's currently not allowed?
It is currently, well, it, it's currently not allowed. A restaurant is allowed in C1. A restaurant, restaurant with drive-through requires a conditional use in C1. So the, the whole issue here is that a fast food restaurant is going to generate a lot more trips than a local coffee shop with the drive-through. So that's why we always, and again, we always were trying to maintain consistency. And so we've always, on a conditional use, restricted it to the specific business.
So it's not that you're denying that, it's just that they would have to come back and get approval if they were to do that?
Yeah, so if, if Peach Coffee Roasters went away and they had another coffee shop that wanted to locate in that building, they would have to come back to Planning Commission and Council. they would have to come back to Planning, Commissioning, Council for approval of a conditional use for another coffee shop with drive-through.
If there are no further questions, ask the applicant to come forward and make a presentation.
Can't do this quietly. Ethan Underwood, I'm an attorney with the firm of Miles, Hansford &amp; Talbot. We're excited, we actually just opened an Alpharetta office here in South, on South Main Street. So we're glad to have our office here. But we're also excited to be bringing this presentation to you, if I can get it displayed. There we go. I think Michael has already gone through most of the details of it. As we stated, we're happy to answer any questions that you have, particularly with the conditions. But as stated, our client, we are representing the property owner of Henderson Commons. And we also have Mr. David Pittman, who is, will be the operator of the coffee shop if we can get this approved. He's here to answer any questions as well. But as stated, we're looking to add a building at the location where you currently have landscape islands. Michael did display the proposal for the architectural rendering. Again, we don't have tenants for those shops currently. This is simply, as far as the signage, it doesn't indicate the specific use, except for the coffee shop. Now, from an aesthetic standpoint, we do have some things that we have to clean up. Our client, at the owner of the center, candidly did not realize to paint the building, he had to go through DRB review. And it's something that we're trying to work through staff, and staff has been very helpful with that. But what we want to make sure that Planning Commission understands is we're trying to, I think, address more than just the drive-through, but also trying to fix this problem and make sure that the entire center looks good. So if this is approved and this building is constructed, you can see, this is the, I guess, the southwestern wing of the center. These will be almost completely blocked from Highway nine. You won't be able to see those buildings. This is a conceptual landscape plan. This will still have to go through DRB. But what we want to emphasize to you, in addition to this new building, there'll be trees and the tree islands that are helping to screen what's in the back, particularly the painted brick that we're having to get resolved with DRB. And this is a view, you can see it's a little sunnier time because there's still leaves on the trees in the islands. But those landscape islands are being progressively cleaned up and updated with new shrubbery. And the new building will be, you can see the landscape island on your right. That'll be approximately the corner of where the sidewalk is in front of the new building. So you can see, the center is a good ways back from a depth perception standpoint. Now, we appreciate staff working with us. So I guess we'll just get down to the nitty-gritty of the conditions. This shows the proposed changes, Michael is correct. We do have a problem with limiting the use to just Peach Coffee Roasters. One, we don't think a conditional use permit by the zoning procedures law can expire just by operation of a condition. But more, the more practical problem is getting a lender who says, well, we're going to, A, fund a building to be constructed with a drive-through that might have to be bricked up at some point. Lenders don't like conditions like that. And two, it restricts Peach Coffee Roasters' ability to sell its business. We would submit to you that with the architectural standards that are being, or going to be enforced and put on a condition, that the city's protected, but it also allows, I guess, the financial flexibility to sell to another user and also overcome the issue with our client's lender who's saying, look, we may not be able to finance this if you have a drive-through lane that you're going to construct and it just could theoretically go away. So we are asking to peg that to the site plan. Again, that way, site plan and architecture provides the city the predictability that you're looking for for future uses. Number three, as Michael said, I think staff was okay with the first addition so that we're designating the drive-through as only for that 2,000-square-foot building. But we do have an exhibit, what we're trying to clarify is the color of that building in the rear. We would submit to you that if staff's comfortable putting conditions that affect the screening of that building, that we could also submit conditions that would affect the architectural detail of that building. Condition number four, staff said they were okay putting the shrubs at car height. They were not comfortable with the exhibit that we're going to show, but we'll talk about that a little more in depth. Outside speakers, we had no problem with the restrictions. The hours of operations, Mr. Pittman is a restaurateur, he's not a land use attorney. So when he was reading the application, they said, well, what are your hours of operational? So he wrote his hours of operation, that is Johns Creek location. But at this site, he's actually looking to have a dinner service. So closing down a restaurant at 6:00 PM, especially when you're trying to serve dinner, is just, it's not economically feasible. The large shopping center is at least 120 feet from the nearest residence north of it. And then you've got another 500, 600 feet from that shopping center up to this proposed building. So we would submit to you that along a state highway, being able to have a restaurant that's open till 11 o'clock on weekdays and midnight on Friday and Saturday night is not atypical and would actually not disturb the neighbors. Number seven, again, we submit to you, if staff's comfortable putting forward the trees and to address the colors of the brick, that we'd like to try to nail that down now and say, okay, this is what everybody has in mind to address that concern. Number eight and nine, that's no problem, replacing dead or dying trees. Providing, and eight, number nine, providing pedestrian crosswalks. I'll get to Mr. Chairman's comments about that. Number 10, as far as reserving right-of-way, we were just looking for more specificity. To say, make accommodations, we didn't really know what that means. So when we said, reserve the right-of-way, what it means is, we know that GDOT is going to be widening Highway nine. So no buildings will be put on there, no landscaping strips that we know are going to be demolished by GDOT. We're saying, we're going to reserve the right-of-way, GDOT's going to come, they're going to take it. In fact, I learned just yesterday, they already have, so they've already acquired the right-of-way for Highway nine. But all of the designs, setbacks, landscaping will be set back from that future right-of-way, which has been acquired. And then finally, number 11, we had no problem with staff's addition of the language regarding the signs. Exhibit A, this is what we're just trying to put forward and say, yes, okay. The building was updated, it was put forward with, it was painted, unfortunately, without DRB approval. And we do still have to go through that process, but at least we're trying to say this color is guiding and we hope that DRB will use the condition, if hopefully approved by City Council, to approve the color. With that, we'll submit for the record, we have 14 pages of emails and petitions signed by residents, tenants, and nearby property owners that say they like the upgrade and they're supportive of that.
The upgrade for the?
The painting of the main center, yes, sir. Exhibit B, this is what staff is not supportive of. We are trying to confirm as far as where these planters go, how is it softening the impact in the facade of the large center? If you see the blue dots, those indicate the pots that would contain six-to-eight-foot-tall potted plants. The reason they're in the locations they are is, A, they're in front of support structures. They're not blocking windows, they're not blocking doors, they're not blocking sidewalks. And B, with a new building, you would not see any other planters behind that or behind the landscaping. Regarding the orange squares, we are proposing the planting of evergreen trees in those locations along that part of the drive-through. But in between the building and the drive-through, there is proposed to be a green space, which we showed in our landscaping exhibit. Maybe staff, maybe DRB would want to block that. Our client doesn't particularly want to block that. He wants people to see it, so they come there and they're walking through the center and they're using it. So, which is why we proposed and said, let's block this portion of the drive-through, but let's not completely screen this green space. And then finally, exhibit C, what we put forward, we just wanted to clarify that there is an existing sign. We'll be putting a new sign in front of this new building if it's approved. And then, moving forward, we would substitute the existing sign, remove that, and build a new one to the east. Quickly, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, so feel free to interrupt me. But I guess, addressing traffic concerns, some of the questions that were raised as far as turns. Right now, it is still a full, both exits and entrances onto Highway nine are full access. I believe that GDOT is putting a median there, I think that those will be closed. But as of today, you can see, it's really just a chicken lane. You can make your left turn in at both locations. But, you know, outside of peak drive times, it's not hard to get into. But when it's rush hour, it is, it's hard, and hopefully people will be using Henderson Parkway at that point for the access because it is signalized. As far as safety in front of the building, there is a sidewalk, you can see it hashed in front. It's a fairly deep sidewalk, so there's crosswalks within the center and also to get you back out to Highway nine, so that traffic can flow. But there's also safe areas to cross and to walk within the center.
So there is no parking in front of the building?
Just to confirm. There is still, if you can see at the top there on the conceptual site plan, there are still some parking spaces there.
Not on the building side, but on Highway nine's side?
Correct, correct.
Are you finished?
I am. If you all have any other questions, we're happy to.
This is an awkward silence. Appreciate your presentation. Any questions for the applicant?
Yes, I've got a couple. So the green space that's being proposed, is it just field or is it going to have benches or tables? Or, I might have missed that.
It's a little hard to see, but if you look in this corner, it's actually one of the most planted. It fits directly in front of the, I guess, if you look at your screen, hopefully you're seeing what I am. It's on the right side of your screen. And it's that landscape island that is in front of the white building.
Yeah, I drove by, so I saw that. So is it intent to keep it like it is today, just a green?
But also put in some seating in there and hopefully people.
Okay.
What we're finding now with, in the COVID pandemic, people still like to get out, they want somewhere safe. So if they can have a bench or somewhere that they can get their food and sit outside, then we expect that will probably continue.
So an extension of the restaurant slash coffee shop?
Correct.
And then the other question I have is, I think at the Johns Creek location, you actually do roasting on-site?
Correct.
So is the intent this one as well, or?
That's my understanding. Mr. Pittman, is that correct?
That would be, that would be correct.
If you can approach the microphone, we are being recorded, so can be.
Yeah, introduce yourself. I'm David Pittman, I'm the owner of Peach Coffee Roasters in Johns Creek. That would be correct, that we would roast at this location as well. We find that the manufacturing process, very similar to a brew pub, is, can be an attraction. And there's something to the, oh, this was roasted here, taking a raw product and turning it into a finished product.
Now that we have you at the podium, how long have you been in business?
I have been in operation for two and a half years, going on two and a half years.
Why this location? Why Alpharetta? How did you choose this particular location?
You want the long version or the short version?
Yes.
The long version is my wife is from this area, she's been here since moved here in 1993. And we have found that there is a need for specialty coffee shops within the suburbs. We can integrate into the communities. There was an article, somebody referenced, just written today by the Johns Creek Carol. So we're local, nothing gets, you know, changed, but we, but we, there's, we integrate with our community. And that's a goal here. And we find that need in the suburbs versus the city. We also, you know, from a restaurant perspective, the cost of a square footage can be, you know, lower here.
So you're not concerned that you're going to be right across from a Dunkin' Donuts?
That, but, you know, you mentioned that, those are two different, even though it's coffee, those are two different markets. But the fact that they're looking at that location says something, you know? So, is there a concern there? But we, not really, because there's a Starbucks right across the street from our current location and it's coffee, but it's two different, two different markets.
Any further questions for the applicant?
So at this location, though, you're going to be offering more food options than you are at the Johns Creek location?
That's correct. We, so when we launched that, that was our first location. And we, it was a small footprint. We don't have the facilities to do a kitchen and some of the things that we would like to do in this location. Currently, we're working with a chef who brings our pastries that we sell there. But we would like to expand that as well. You know, the vision is not to do, you know, a huge sit-down, but it's going to be freshly made. And initially, our concept is it can be eaten with one hand, but we probably want to expand just a little bit more than that. You know, but still keep it simple, that's kind of always a good thing to do.
Is the restaurant, is the coffee shop viable with the staff hours of 7:00 AM to 6:00, or?
So.
What's your opinion?
All right, so 16 hours is how you can maximize your labor, that's two eight-hour shifts. For a coffee shop, the clock starts depending on when you can get, when the commute begins. So if that commute starts at 6:00, then that's when we would try to run two shifts of labor. Does that answer your question? So we would try to run from 6:00, eight hours, you have a shift change, and then another eight hours. If that commute, if we find that our high-traffic time's at 7:00, then, you know, 7:00. We were, we actually stayed open later at our Johns Creek location, but we found that it just wasn't viable to, we're able to condense it and, but to maximize, we look at two eight-hour shifts, maximize our labor.
I'm just, I'm curious why you would feel that you'd want to stay open until midnight on Friday and Saturday? I mean, this town kind of shuts down a little bit at midnight, especially that part of town. I'm trying to think if there's anything over there that would be, I mean, I guess QT's going in and they'll be open. But that's, I'm just curious why you have to be open until midnight or why that's an issue?
I think it's, I think it's to extend it more later than 6:00, definitely later than 6:00.
So midnight is not what you want, it's just that you want it more than 6:00 o'clock?
More than 6:00, but, but.
Yeah, I can understand that.
But a property owner would like it as flexible as possible, but we'll defer to your light.
Any further questions? All right, I'm going to open this for public comment. And afterwards, you may have time for rebuttal if you so desire. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor of this application? We have two other than staff. Seeing none and one in opposition. No one in favor, no one in opposition. Do you need any other time to say anything else before I turn this over to the board? Thank you. I turn this over to the board for discussion and our emotion. Just to start you off, or you think about what you want to say, I think I like the idea of a coffee shop at this particular location. It's sufficiently separated from residential areas and I would say screened by the current shopping center. And I think that we can work with the conditions, by the concept, I think, to me, is acceptable. Now, with respect to the conditions, I always defer to the DRB for review and approval. And seeing what they have done in the past, you should be comfortable dealing with a design review board to come up with something that's acceptable to you and fits what the city's looking for. So I feel comfortable having them make final decisions regarding that and not necessarily including an exhibit of what you want. and not necessarily including an exhibit of what you want and saying substantially similar or language like that. Now, condition number 10, you mentioned that the DOT has already obtained the right-of-way that's needed. I'm going to propose that we modify the language to meet, to say developer shall provide right-of-way, comma, if needed, for the DOT Highway project. Provide is more specific, and it's if needed. So if it's not needed, then you don't provide it, if indeed they have obtained it already. But that's for the board's consideration.
Mr. Chairman, I did have one other question for staff. That's on item number two, about the no additional restaurant with drive-through window use or subleasing. Is that because it's a multi-use building? Or was this standard to others standalone businesses such as this already?
Yeah, the, the, the last part of that sentencing, condition number two, is standard language associated with a conditional use. Of course, the subleasing definitely refers to this is not, they're leasing a space within a multi-tenant building.
Michael, one question, just because I think there was something similar we did with the Starbucks in Windward Parkway, because the old bank that they renovated, we made a conditional use because that was not within the Windward Pod Plan 66 or whatever it was called. And it was still tied to Starbucks under the conditional use, correct?
It was.
It's not a lease, it was owned, they owned the bank, but we had that same similar language in there.
It was in there, yes. That was a master plan amendment and a conditional use because it's part of the Windward Master Plan. But yes, because it was a conditional use to allow the Starbucks with the drive-through, it was tied to Starbucks only. So Starbucks goes away, whoever comes in there would have to get a conditional use.
And this is protective of the city when you grant a conditional use and somebody can sell, lease it to another entity, and you just don't know what the operation's going to be that can significantly be different.
Yeah, I would actually go so far as to say is if you remove the connection between a specific tenant and the use, it ceases to be a conditional use.
That is correct.
Yeah, you know, I think the biggest concern here is, you know, if this had come before us as a restaurant with drive-through for a fast-food restaurant, it's likely that the, the recommendation may have not have been to approve the trips, the excessive trips associated with that, especially when we're trying to create a walkable area in this location. You know, one of the restaurants, fast-food restaurants that I think about is the Cookout Restaurant over in the North Winds area. They're open 24 hours a day. They get extremely busy. And so if we, if we were to take conditions the way that the applicant is proposing, the coffee shop didn't make it for whatever reason, a use like that could go right in there. And that would be concerning.
I was actually going to ask the applicant if you can come forward. You mentioned about serving food, and I want to know the extent to which you're going to be serving food. Through the drive-through, what type of food?
So, so the, the food that we have right now is, it's not fried. I'm trying to tell you what it's not. It's going to be healthy, anywhere from vegan to colaches. But no, nothing that's going to be fried or, or fast food. Could potentially, this, this is the toughest part, I think, of running a coffee shop is your food program. So we're envisioning it, and some of the ideas to even going to quickly-made pizzas and things like that.
Perhaps maybe ask the question this way. Given the two examples that are commonly used, you'd have a Dunkin' Donuts across the street.
Okay.
I would imagine most of us are familiar with the kinds of food offerings that Dunkin' Donuts have. And likewise, Starbucks has food offerings.
Okay.
If that's the spectrum, are you closer to the Starbucks side?
No, we're outside of that spectrum.
You're even further.
We're outside of that spectrum.
Like Corner Bakery kind of stuff?
Corner Bakery, I want to, you know.
Which shut down recently.
Are y'all familiar with colaches? Possibly, it's a European thing.
Like a turnover kind of thing?
Kind of, kind of, sort of there. It's going to be more than what you would get at a Starbucks or a Dunkin' Donuts. But it's not going to be something you would get at a Chili's. And we're trying to find, you know, exactly what that is and what that looks like and kind of what resonates. But it's going to be really leaning toward the wholesome, healthy side, whole grains and things like that. So, and we're figuring that out.
And the reason I ask that question is a statement. My comment regarding if this was a fast-food restaurant, the recommendation probably would be not to approve depending on the traffic, traffic level or level of traffic. And so we, I am trying to clarify in my mind, how close do you get to a fast-food restaurant? And would that impact staff's recommendation? And that would be a question I would ask Michael after you explain what it is that you're going to serve.
I would, I would not put us in the fast-food restaurant. And we might have different, you know, when that comes to mind, what that means. You tell me fast food, and then I think of Chick-fil-A over there in Avalon, or, you know, which, which is a lot, nothing like that. I would, in a pro forma, I would probably estimate 200 transactions a day, and that's walk-in and drive-through. The whole, the whole purpose of our drive-through is really to give the commuter or that person just the ability to grab something very quickly and not have to get out of the car. We've been limited in Johns Creek. Had we had a drive-through, I believe our sales would be up by, you know, 30%. But going back to the restaurant question, that's not what I want to operate. I don't want to operate a, a fast-food, you know, grab-and-go. I really see that, I wish I could give you a better example, but it's not what I would call your traditional fast-food restaurant. But it's, it's going to be more than what a Starbucks or Dunkin' Donuts would.
I mean, if it's a drive-through, it has to be pretty quick because nobody's sitting in, nobody's sitting in a drive-through for more than a couple minutes.
Well, the, the plan doesn't accommodate pull-up to be delivered to your car, you know?
Right. We, we still want to maintain that, that connection with our customers and not, you know, otherwise, we lose what we're, what we're trying to do. That's not what we're trying to be here or do. But we, we also, in the COVID environment, I think that it's, it's been probably necessary as any time. One more thing on the kind of, the way we resolved it in Johns Creek is we went to an order, order app, order head app. So you can go to our website and you can place your order there. And I'm, and I want something better than, than that because we're still, we get it and then we have to walk it out to them. But we would, I can still see us envision, hey, you order ahead, and then you just pull it to the drive-through and then, you know, we hand you your order there as well. So just, just kind of, you know, thinking through it, but we just, we don't want to limit ourselves and not have this, this as an option.
I do have one other question for you. You said the sweet spot is the two eight-hour shifts. Is that, when you talk, that's 16 hours, is that open-close 16 hours or serving 16 hours? Or is that, you know, looking at your hours, I mean, midnight's a stretch for, you know, me. And so six to 10 would give you your, that would give you your 16-hour window. But is it, you really need to serve to 10 or are you really serving to nine and having an hour to close? I mean.
Right. The close, 30 minutes on each end is realistic. But, you know, six to 10? And a lot of it, it depends on how it's, it's received, you know, in adjusting the hours of, you know, and is it even profitable to stay open from these hours?
Right. It's a maximum window.
Right.
And that's why it's worded as operation hours. And so, you know, you've got to have their shoulders, whatever you want to call them, for shutdown and opening. So I was just trying to understand that.
I mean, I definitely think that, you know, locking somebody into an eight to three, it doesn't make any sense. I mean, who's going to, who could make a profit working six hours a day, you know, being open six hours a day unless that was the choice of the applicant? But I think if the, if the point is to try to make this viable, you have to, 3:00 on a Sunday, my gosh, this is when I'm just getting ready to go out and get my coffee. So, but I'm not sure that I'm the one that, I have no interest in trying to figure this all out. But I think that if we want to support our businesses, we have to give them flexibility to maximize profit.
So you wouldn't be opposed to a 6:00 to 10:00 P.M. operation?
I, I wouldn't be opposed to it. I, I guess it's written that way to allow for flexibility and to see, you know, what we can expand into. And this isn't in consideration now, but what, what happens if, you know, we decide to do drinks, alcoholic beverages? Now, that's a whole nother conversation, but probably don't want to have it here. But how does that do your operating hours and things like that?
Well.
You have a lot of things to consider.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, yeah. Which is why I think he said it's not, I don't think that's a rabbit hole we're going down at this point. But I, I do think that the challenge, obviously, in discussing the hours as we kind of separate through the modifications on the conditions, if you, if you assume the most liberal interpretation that the applicant has requested to the modification with the building, coupled with this maximalist interpretation of the operating hours, you've really well exceeded and given the greatest amount of flexibility, not necessarily to the applicant, but in point of fact to the, the building owner, right? Which I think then, to use your point, you arguably has a circumstance where sometime in the 4:00 hour, you have employees showing up to, to begin work in a, in a business that would become operational at 5:00 in the morning.
Yeah.
Which seem, which seemingly is a big ask and not necessarily one that the applicant himself is making. So I think it's perhaps best left, if I understood Michael's comment, that there is perhaps still some flexibility to work in there that may or may not necessarily be addressed best as it's been presented here.
That's why you're the board to figure this one out. If, there are no further questions to the applicant, I'm going to ask Michael a couple of questions. Anything else? Given what you've heard, Michael, regarding the food service, are you clear, because this is, we approving a coffee shop, that, and I was going to ask you how we estimate the peak-hour traffic? Is it comparative or compared to other coffee shops? And correct me if I'm wrong, that the, the conditional use in part, not in large part, is based on the fact that it's not going to generate as much traffic as a drive-through restaurant? So are you clear to what extent this is going to be close to a fast-food to a coffee shop?
So the item was presented to the city as a local coffee shop. There was not discussion about this expanded food. And when we think of a coffee shop, the primary piece of that should be a coffee shop, should be coffee. The food should be secondary. So we would actually recommend in condition number two, after the name of the business, Peach Coffee Roasters, should, we should actually add to that that says which is primarily a coffee shop?
And why is that necessary, just to clarify?
Well, because there's information that's being provided this evening that was not part of the application. The expanded food service that's being discussed was not part of the application. The recommendation was based on this being a local coffee shop that was not going to generate as many trips as a fast-food drive-through, fast-food with drive-through. So we think that that's necessary to add, given the information that we're hearing this evening.
Yeah, the conditional use is based in part to the fact that it's not going to generate heavy traffic like a drive-through restaurant would. And if it was a drive-through restaurant, the recommendation from staff would potentially be not to approve. So what I was trying to, to be clear in my mind is that staff is comfortable and that they understand clearly to what extent this is not going to go to the extreme of, because the applicant indicates they're going to be serving food, so that we, we know exactly what we are proving or within reason.
I don't think that, I'm just trying to think, is there a coffee shop in town now that doesn't serve food?
Well, we're fine with food associated with a coffee shop, but the coffee should be primary. The, the food should be secondary to, to the coffee shop.
I don't remember, I don't remember asking those questions, though, when we were debating Starbucks. So I, I don't know if, just the information that was provided at the podium would be enough to significantly change the applicant's request.
Yeah, the extended hours to 11:00 and 12:00 P.M.?
Okay, that, yeah, but, but I don't know, I don't know. I mean, I think that we're.
Let me ask a different question. The, when Eric reviewed the trip generation, that was based on the operating hours that were provided?
When he looked at the, the trip generation, he's using an IT rate. And there are probably multiple for, for a coffee shop. But he did use, he, he selected based on the description that was provided by the applicant in the application that this was a local coffee shop, not a Starbucks, but a local mom-and-pop type coffee shop. That, the trip generation numbers that were provided in the report are based on that.
And that's why I asked that question, because of the trip generation rate, peak-hour traffic. I think the language that Michael is proposing primarily, a coffee shop, restricted in a certain way, that it fits the conditional use and what we are approving. Not that we question what the applicant is going to do, but just for clarity. And precedent setting, because sometimes when we, we take action here, we set a precedent for another applicant in the future. So we want to make sure that we are consistent and that we are fair to the applicant and that we can defend what we approved.
Well, so to that, Mr. Chairman, I, I would be, I think it's, sets perhaps the wrong precedent to, to try to create in these kinds of settings, what's the definition of primarily? Is it 60/40? Is it 70/30? Is it, and, and I think by definition, if I understand correctly what the applicant has said, is that it is a more localized, more mom-and-pop oriented kind of restaurant. And with all due respect to the applicant, I'm not certain how many additional trips would be generated by the limited menu that they would likely be offering, given the comparable choices in the immediate vicinity, right? And again, I may be making some assumptions implicit in that. But I, but I feel like hours are more easily defined, hours of operation, which would shape usage of the business. But I, but I don't know, I don't know how we would thread the needle of saying, okay, well, these, this amount of revenue generated from the food items somehow knocks it out of compliance with respect to the conditional use. And I, that's, so I, so again, I'm just voicing what my opinion is with respect to that.
We, we wouldn't, and I hope we are not using, I mean, I don't want to make the statement I was going to make. I was going to say beating a dead horse. In the absence of clear technical definitions, we defer to Webster's definition. I think it does add a little more clarity to it. And it's, I'm not, I don't want to continue trying to explain it, but I think it doesn't hurt to add the statement, which is what staff is recommending. And they are the ones who are going to enforce it primarily, which means it's a coffee shop, not.
I know, but I think I still want to know what the, what your definition is, is. Is Dunkin' Donuts a coffee shop? Is Starbucks a coffee? It just defined to me what a coffee shop is, as opposed to a place that sells coffee primarily. Like Valor, even Valor has a pretty extensive, has food on the menu down the street. So trying to decide what your definition is of that as it relates to this.
Well, I mean, the whole point here is that it would be the majority of what they are providing as part of this business is coffee. This, just to give an example, Vitality Bowl out here in city center, they sell coffee, but they're primarily a restaurant. Coffee is secondary to anything else that they're doing. You know, I don't know if I can give you...
Well, I think this is called, you know, this is called a coffee shop. I'm thinking, I think it's implicit in the name, that's the focus.
Yeah, and I think that we need some clarity into, because what I've heard is it sounds like the business is expanding into, I've heard dinner service, or maybe, I think that, I heard that. So it seems like it's becoming more than a coffee shop and more of a restaurant, a food restaurant.
If we left it as what the staff proposed originally, would that be something you could work with the applicant on before the council meeting?
Certainly, we have time between now and the 25th.
Sure. In the application.
We certainly could work with the applicant and propose some, probably going to have to propose some more language to that condition.
I think I feel comfortable either way. I think the applicant has been in business for two years and they want to do coffee. I don't believe they are going to deviate significantly from what they are doing now, but I think I would support the clarification, it's primarily coffee and because of the statement about adding food. So it's really the desire of the board, what the board wants to do. And council, of course, will make the final decision, of course. The staff recommendation has not changed.
Okay, are we...
That's what I was clarifying with the staff.
So, just so I, so I'm clear, because we've had a lot of pieces that have been moving. My understanding, based on the differences between the original report and the modifications that the applicant has applied, or has requested, is that numbers three, 10, and 11 are acceptable to the, to staff. Do I have that correct?
I had proposed a change on 10, which I'm going to make.
Correct, correct.
As made.
Yeah, except for condition three, the very last sentence, we do not support deleting.
Correct, I'm sorry, yeah. So the first part of that, but not the second. And then our question is, is to what extent, based on the discussion that we've heard, would we be modifying numbers two and six?
I think we leave it and let council decide, go with staff recommendation, that would be.
I was just saying, for the purposes of our discussion, we've been primarily focused on two and six.
I'm fine.
Yeah, I would, my intent is to support leaving two as presented by staff, hoping that they can clarify their business before the council meeting. And then a number six, six to 10 for operation is what I'd be prepared to support.
I would agree.
And as it relates to the suggestion, to the modification on number 10, that...
Provide right of way, comma, if needed, comma.
If needed.
Okay.
All right, I don't mean to throw something in here, but staff recommendation is conditional use to allow a restaurant with drive-through. So this is already being presented as a restaurant. So I'm really confused.
Yeah.
So...
The applicant originally didn't include the restaurant portion, so it's...
But it's in here.
Actually, they did.
They did.
In their application, they do say they want to offer extended food service.
Restaurant with drive-through. So it's already in here, so I think, not that it makes any difference on this conversation, but I believe that they were transparent in that.
I did want to concur on number six about the hours. I think the 7 a.m., I don't really drink coffee, but I know that my wife does, and if she's out, she wants to get a cup before 7:00 on the road, or my daughter.
You better support it.
Yeah, so... I don't want to make it too late, but I do think the six to 10, I would definitely support that change if it was written in.
Whoever makes a motion, I would like to have it read out, so it's clear what we are voting on.
I know, I'm making it.
I think my friend on the other side of the podium there is ready to go on this one.
And we will perfect it as we go, because I took notes, and I know everybody took notes. So anytime we vote, we want to make sure we are very clear on what we are recommending to council. And the last thing you want to do also as a planning commissioner is to say, well, let council decide. You always make a recommendation to council, that's why they appointed us.
Well, I was just saying, I was going to leave it a staff, I was leaving it a staff recommendation. I was supporting the staff recommendation to present. So is it six to 10, Monday through Fri, Monday through Sunday, seven days?
Six to 10.
Okay, that's easy.
They can work within that. Are you ready, Fran?
Are you?
I'm not sure, I have my wingman here.
I cannot make a motion unless it's very extreme circumstances that she doesn't make motions.
Help me get the rest right, okay.
Yeah, okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve ZC 2020-0106 CU-20-08 Peach Coffee Roasters/Henderson Commons. With the following...
Okay.
Ready? Okay, so number one, on the conditions, support the staff recommendations as presented. Correct?
That's number one.
Number one. Number two, support the staff recommendations there as well. Number three, support the staff recommendations as presented, but they had the line, main shopping center building as depicted in exhibit A, referencing the depiction. So we want to include that, correct, Michael?
No, the, the staff approves the first change, building with drive-through. And then the second addition by applicant, staff does not support, once the new building shall be non-painted brick with final approval by D R B to stay.
Okay, so just keep that out, okay. So then the building with drive-through should be included in that second sentence, or first sentence, excuse me, for condition three. We support staff recommendations, condition four, as presented. Staff recommendations, condition five, as presented. And recommendation, condition number six...
Oh, sorry, let's go back to four. There is one change proposed by staff to car height, if I recall, Michael, you said...
In locations as depicted on exhibit B would be not in the recommendation.
Just the first change to car height.
Okay, so then it would be screened, after the word screened, to car height.
Correct.
Okay. Number five, approve staff conditions. Number six, hours of operation, seven days a week, 6 a.m. to 10 p.m. That would be a change, strike everything else. Number seven, we are okay with staff recommendations. Number eight, okay with staff recommendations. Number nine, okay with staff recommendations. Number 10, after the word shall, we want to include, strike the make accommodations and put provide right of way, comma, if needed, comma, for the G dot highway. And then number 11, we agree with the presented condition from the applicant. As written in our, I'm not going to read it, as written, is that okay, as written?
By the applicant.
Yeah, by the applicant.
Any second?
A second.
Motion has been made and properly circled it. Is everyone clear on what the motion is? Any further discussions? Alicia, are you clear? Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, or in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. It's going to be presented to council on January the 25th. And as always, council makes the final decision. Thank you, and have a good night and a great year. The second item on the agenda, you should have it right in front of you.
I forgot Larry was in there. You're in a long time.
Oh, welcome back.
It's a nice nap, thank you.
We need to go and see how my food is left. Second item on the agenda is CU-21-01/V-21-01. C S, is that the way it's said, C S T?
Save. Save.
Save.
S S T?
Save.
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 Okay. Neo and Spa slash 55 Roswell Street, and Michael.
Which just means it's true, right? There is, it's true. Okay. The next item before you is a conditional use in variance to allow spa services for Save Air Nails and Spa. And of course, the applicant will school us on how to pronounce that correctly, which is a nail salon that provides some spa services, including facials, massage, and waxing. A variance is also requested to reduce the minimum distance between comparable spa services uses. I have the location map on the overhead. The subject property is located at 55 Roswell Street, it is suite 110. Property is zone C2, general commercial, it's located in our downtown, which does allow spa services with approval of a conditional use. Property is completing construction, received approval back in May of 2015. The applicant's business is proposed in the ground floor of a three-story office building. Here's a photograph of the building that has just gone up on the property. This is just adjacent to the city's parking lot and just south of the city's newest parking deck. The surrounding properties are zone C2, general commercial to the northeast and south, R10M to the west and north. City, as I mentioned, the city parking lot is to the north and west. Made Restaurant is located to the north. 54 Roswell Street is to the east, and 61 Roswell Street, which is associated with this development. It's the historic structure that you can see on the edge of the picture here. That is also part of this development. I believe there's a ginger, a retail store that sells ginger that is going into that location. There is a variance also requested with this application to the definition of spa services, which does have a minimum 2,000-foot distance requirement between comparable spa businesses. The other business that's with, that's closer than 2,000 feet, and let's just go to the spa map. So the applicant's business is approximately at this location here. And the nearest other spa business that is within that 2,000 feet is the Natural Body Spa that is right out front of us, front of city center. Now, Natural Body Spa is about 1,200 feet away, and that is measured, we measure it always the same way. It's as the crow flies in a straight-line distance from property to property. The applicant's provided some information in the application, and she'll go over that, that if you measure it as a car drives or a person walks, it's actually over 2,000 feet. But I'll let the applicant go into those details. But I think more importantly is the definition says comparable spa businesses. Natural Body Spa is a full, is a full day spa, whereas the applicant's business is a nail salon that provides some spa services, the massage, facial, and waxing. And those spa services are accessory to the main part of the business, which is nail salon. The business has a, as I mentioned, is focused on a nail salon. The spa services that they are, have included are typical of other nail salon locations that we found in our research. So they, those other locations sometimes do offer these other types of services. The applicant's business name translates to It's Green. And I mention that just because it's, it makes their, her business a little bit different than other nail salons. They have a, they have a focus on eco-friendly, sustainable products that they use. The hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 9:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Sunday noon to 5:00 p.m. The applicant is anticipating between 10 and 12 employees at this location. The applicant did not, we don't have a floor plan for you. However, there are 13 manicure stations, eight pedicure stations, there's retail display, and then two spa treatment rooms. Just go back to the site plan, as I mentioned. This is the building shown from Roswell Street. This is the site plan. And so this is Roswell Street. This is a public sidewalk, and that sidewalk kind of comes around. There's a couple of trees that were required to be saved as part of this development. And you can see the applicant's space is in this highlighted space here. This is an office building with retail spaces on the ground floor and then office above. I won't go into a lot of details, but the applicant did provide these renderings of the interior of her space. I'll leave these up in case they need to reference those, but I just did want to show those since the applicant went to the trouble. This item was shown to the public at the December 9th Community Zoning Information Meeting, and there were no public comments, we held that meeting over Zoom. Staff reviewed the applicant's proposal and finds that the conditional use and variance do not conflict with the established review criteria. The proposed use would complement other uses along Roswell Street and contribute to the walkable environment we're creating in the downtown. And of course, the, as stated, the applicant's business and Natural Body Spa are different, whereas the applicant business is primarily nail salon, and Natural Body Spa is a day spa that does not offer those nail services. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the following conditions. One, spa services shall be added as a conditional use at 55 Roswell Street, suite 110, and limited to no more than 1,918 square feet. Conditional use, condition two, conditional use approval shall be limited to Save Air Nails and Spa. No additional spa service businesses or subleasing shall be permitted within the approved space. Again, so if this business goes away, any future spa service business would need to come back to planning commission and council for a conditional use. Three, spa services shall be limited to facials, waxing, and massage. I did forget to mention in our definition of spa services, it's, the reason why facial, waxing, and massage is classified as spa services, because these are services that could require their clientele to disrobe. So those, that's why we make sure that those are specifically conditioned and limited to those particular services. Four, hours of operation shall be... Four, hours of operation shall be Monday through Saturday, 9:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Sunday 12 to 5:00. And five, window signage shall be limited to no more than 10% of the window area. No lighting, window trim. And that concludes the staff report. If you have any question, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Michael. If you could remind the board the reason for the distant separation between these particular use. I recall several years ago when this was imposed or codified. If you can explain the reason why that was necessary.
Sure, the distance requirement was placed in here, and let me go back to the spa map. So this map shows both spa establishments, which could include massage services. And then there's also massage establishments, which are in the blue. And those are limited, those are just massage services that are being provided there. As you can see from the map, there are a number of spa. There are a number of businesses that we categorize as spa services throughout the city. And I think that there were some concerns. The 2,000-foot distance requirement was put into the definition because maybe there were concerns that they would be congregating all together in one particular area. And we didn't want that to occur. So that's why the distance requirement was added in that particular case. But again, I think that we asked the applicant to go ahead and apply for the variance in this case. We do believe that the business is different than Natural Body Spa and not a comparable business in the definition of that particular use. However, just out of an abundance of caution, we wanted to make sure that we did this properly, and we went ahead and advertised that variance.
It was to limit or completely eliminate cannibalism, where they pull each other's customers and have a substantial distance between them. If I recall, that was one of the reasons.
That could certainly be part of that, yes, sure.
I probably used the wrong word. Any other questions for Michael?
I'm not aware in this specific building, as I mentioned, in the historic structure, right adjacent to this building, they do have a lease with the ginger store. I can't remember their name right offhand. Yeah. But I'm not aware of specific businesses. The applicant, as a future tenant here, may have some more information on that, possibly you may want to ask.
So, Michael, when you have that variance, do the, does that spa locations that are in that area, are they notified? Or do you just post it, and if they see it, they see it? I mean, is there a requirement to notify anyone in the area?
There is not, the only requirement for notification is our typical requirement of any public hearing that would become before this board and city council, which is all properties within 500 feet of that property. Of course, we place a sign, a public notice sign on the property. We advertise in the newspaper. But we do not require, in this specific case, we would not require the applicant and the city does not reach out to other businesses that would be within that 2,000-foot distance.
So we're not worried about Natural Body being concerned with them being within the 2,000 feet and offering massages as they offer?
No, that is not part of our consideration.
All right, if there are no further questions, we ask the applicant to come forward and make a presentation. Good evening.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
Well, let me just clarify one little thing about the name of the salon.
Yes.
It is French. It's pronounced Savre. I don't expect everyone to be able to pronounce it the same way. Savre means it's green. It's a play on a word, expression, c'est vrai. So you were very close. But that is spelled V R A I S. Forgive me, I haven't written in French in a long time. That's my mother's native tongue. So that's where it comes from, Savre, as in it's green, okay? So Savre is a chic and very fashion-forward nail salon, or I like to say nail spa, because it's just not your average nail salon where you walk in, you get a regular manicure or a pedicure, and then you're out. It's a little more involved. So we offer the highest quality, eco-friendly, and sustainable products. So that means our nail polishes are free of many of the harsh chemicals that you normally have in your typical nail polishes that you will purchase, let's say, at your local CVS or Walmart or at the traditional nail salons. So those chemicals have unfortunately affected the healths of a lot of technicians as well as the customers. And there's a list that I have, they're very long. I cannot pronounce them because some of the names have about 13 letters in them. So you can imagine, most of them are not natural ingredients in these products. Savre is also, our goal is to redefine nail care as well as self-care with a very unique approach. So that approach is having that health and environmentally conscious approach, you know, by means of using these products that are non-toxic, that are vegan, cruelty-free, and breathable. In addition, we're offering luxury services, which I like to refer to as five-star services, but not at the five-star prices. So many times, my personal experiences have been going to nail salons where it's not really about the customer. You know, it's just a quick in and out. In this case, we will make sure that our staff will be certified with what we recognize as advanced nail technology certifications and advanced foot care certifications. So the average nail salon technician is licensed, but many don't have that extra certification to be able to look at the nails and the feet and determine whether that client may have a medical issue or not. And we decided to do that because from my own personal experiences, I've had the experience where nail technicians would offer to remove ingrown toenails for me, which they should not do, and they're not supposed to do. That is the responsibility of a podiatrist. In addition, I've seen clients with signs of fungus, athlete's foot, and you're really not supposed to cater to that client. You're supposed to refer them to a podiatrist. And you have the right to deny service to that customer due to that condition. So this is one of the things I'm very concerned about with most nail salons, that they're not proactive with being considerate of the client that comes in as far as their medical conditions as well. One of the things that we're emphasizing with this nail salon that sets us apart from other nail salons would be the ventilation system that we chose to use. We will be meeting codes, obviously, for the ventilation system, but we're also exceeding those codes by using a system from a company called Airivec System. They're actually the leading supplier of clean air system equipment for salons throughout the country. Ever since, probably going back in 2012, a lot of the cities have become very strict with the ventilation systems of nail salons because if some of you have gone to nail salons, there's an overwhelming odor that just engulfs you, and it's not healthy. So it does affect the client as well as the nail technician. And having medical professionals in my family, many have said they've seen a lot of young technicians with early signs of lung cancer as well as respiratory issues. So by using this system, this is a way to protect the client as well as the customer. And it's called Airivec, so if any of you want to look that up. They're a leader in this industry. Also, our sterilization process. Now, according to the codes, they just require that you disinfect the instruments, and disinfecting is not enough. What we're doing is, we will be sterilizing our instruments with what we call a verifiable autoclaving, which is a medical-grade sterilization device. So think of a huge microwave, a metal microwave, or just think of hospitals, how they sterilize their implements. So this is what we're doing. So we're investing a lot in the care of the customers as well as the technicians. Speaking of the technicians, our staff, as I mentioned, we are, we will be requiring this special certification of advanced nail technology and foot care nail technology. We will be offering them incentives as well. They will be W2 employees. Hopefully, as we grow, we would be able to offer them health insurance. Many of them are not offered health insurance, which is one of the reasons why there's such a high turnover in this industry of nail technicians. We went also above and beyond to choosing the right furnishings for the technicians as ergonomic chairs. Some of them are really funny-looking, but believe me, they're super comfortable on your hip and your lower back, which has been an issue for a lot of nail technicians. What else do I want to talk about? So the reason why I came up with this idea was because I myself was literally sick and tired of going to nail salons. I mean, I was wearing a mask before it was required to wear a mask due to COVID-19. I grew up with respiratory issues as well as I've had challenges with lupus. So you can imagine the effects of just walking into some of these nail salons and being engulfed with these harsh fumes. And also, my background is in the fashion and beauty industry. I was a fashion designer for about 25 years in New York City. And having to maintain an appearance to do presentations, I've had to basically go to these salons to maintain my appearance. And throughout the years, I was fortunate to go to some really great salons that had exceptional service as well as quality products. So I wanted to bring that here to Alpharetta. I've had experience where I've spoken to a lot of the residents in Alpharetta and just having conversations with everyday people about nail salons. And, you know, they shared with me some of their issues that they have with local nail salons. And a bell went off, and I decided to go in that direction. So as a client, I know what I want. I've done my research with other clients as to what their needs are. And I decided to just bring that to Alpharetta. And hence, you have Savre, it's green.
Thank you for your eloquent presentation.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. It's my passion. It's why I love everything fashion and beauty, so I'm right at home.
Learned a lot about nail salons, more than I've learned through the years approving this. So the pronunciation is Savre.
Savre, yes, very good.
Commentez-vous, je le redis. I have a daughter who is fluent in French, but I don't know French. Any questions for the applicant?
Great, great presentation.
Quick question.
Yes.
When you're talking about the waxing and massages, what, within those categories, would you be offering? Because I see that you only have two treatment rooms.
Yes.
So, I mean, it will be limited. You're not doing our massages.
No, no. So we're primarily, I've heard that word used several times. We're primarily a nail salon. That's who we are. According to studies, 95% plus clients, when they go into a nail salon, they expect waxing as well. And obviously, neck up, we can wax, but the conditional use permit that we're requesting is to be able to offer waxing to other body parts where the client is required to disrobe. It's a bit challenging to have a client disrobe, I mean, not disrobe, when you have to wax chest or back or armpits or bikini area. That's TMI for you, I don't know. Yeah. And as far as the facials and the massages are concerned, yes, we will be offering those services. But again, the nail salon is, the nail services are our primary service.
I was just looking at other nail salons and what they offer. And as far as, I mean, most of them, almost all of them do the waxing.
Yeah.
As far as the massages, the most that I can find was shoulder and foot massages. I really didn't see anybody who was going into a full-body massage.
Correct.
Any of that kind of stuff.
Correct, yeah.
Is that what you're looking at also?
Exactly, yeah. It's pretty time-consuming as well. And yes, we only have two treatment rooms. Waxing is very popular and very busy. So, I mean, waxing could take 10 minutes, sometimes 30 minutes if you want to do a head-to-toe wax. As far as massages is concerned, yes, you know, in the future, I would love to have a much larger space, 5,000-square-foot space where I can offer everything. But in this location, as far as massages, yes, we are focusing on the shoulders, the feet, the leg, the back, but it still requires disrobing. You know? Facial's not so much, but most people like to disrobe when they're getting a facial to relax as well. And, you know, the products that we're using, the chemicals are not harsh. At comparable day spas that offer, let's say, a facial, they're more involved in chemical peels and using harsh chemicals, and that's not what we're offering. Again, I want to emphasize, this is primarily a nail salon. And not to offer at least waxing. Customers don't want to be inconvenienced where they're spending an hour in a nail salon, and then they have to get up and go and travel to another location for a simple wax. Or while we're giving them a pedicure, we can also include and offer that extra service where they can have a full-leg massage as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? No further questions for now. If you have some time for Ebaro, I think we have under one member of the audience other than staff. I'm going to ask him whether he wants to speak in favor or in opposition to the application.
He better have something nice to say because he's my partner.
Oh, so he is the applicant, okay. All right.
I'm a visionary.
Would you like to say something? She did all the talking. Oh, you know your place.
Yes, good man.
I'm saying all the wrong things tonight, Marty.
Just to let you know, he's great. He's doing all the marketing for the salon, extensive marketing, so.
Excellent, that's great.
A good partner.
All right, with no public, there is no point calling for a public comment. Anything you'd like to add?
Thank you. I'm looking forward to contributing to the growth of Alpharetta because I do see that it's growing nicely. We're actually excited to be in Alpharetta because we've been looking for a home for the past three years. And we have always loved Alpharetta. To be honest with you, we initially thought of Atlanta. And then we said, wait a minute. I said, I think the community of Alpharetta would really appreciate a salon like this. It's going to be very different. I mean, as you can see with the renderings, I just want to show you one thing that's a main feature in the salon. You see this wall here, okay? This is actually a live wall. This is a wall of ivy. Okay, so that's going to be a really great, that's our main feature of the salon. And the swing that's in front, this will be like an Instagrammable area where the customers, you know, the clients can take a picture, and this will help us with our marketing as well. Also, the furnishings are sustainable, made of sustainable materials. as well. Also, the furnishings are sustainable, made of sustainable materials. So, when you see this front desk here, this is actual wood coming from local, local mills. And we're using local artisans to build the manicure tables right here, these tables here. You can't really, this is the initial rendering, but we'll have source captures on the tables here as well. So, these will be built by local artisans. So, you know, we're definitely involving the community. This table here is also, this will be a live-edge table. We're working closely with an architect. He's actually going to build this table for us. It's about 10 feet long. Let me see if there's anything else.
It's a beautiful space.
Thank you, thank you. You know, when I designed this space, I also thought, I wanted the, the interior design to complement the exterior of the building and the area. And I thought this would be great to keep in the theme of eco-friendly, sustainable living. Yeah. We do, we're doing our best to purchase products made in the USA, you know, to save on carbon footprint and to support local businesses. But what we're finding out is a lot of the suppliers are getting their products from overseas. But we're, that's why I decided to focus on using local, you know, artisans, you know, for the millwork, as well as the live wall. That wall's about 10 feet high.
Is this your first practice like this? I'm calling it practice.
Yes.
Or do you have another location?
No, this will be our first. I have strong retail experience as well, as well as fashion design. So, I started my fashion career in retail, in retail management. So, I've assisted with opening up stores. Very challenging. It's a process. And the other half of my career was as a fashion designer. I started my career with Liz Claiborne. I don't know if you remember that brand. I might be dating myself. With Liz Claiborne, Dana Buckman, I've worked for companies where I've designed for Halston when they were trying to bring that label back. So, my exposure has been with high fashion, high fashion and beauty.
All right. Thank you. I think you're going all out, and welcome to the city of Alpharetta.
Oh, thank you.
It's, it's commendable to start a business with this business environment that we have been going through over the years. So, we applaud you for doing that.
Thank you, thank you. It's a recession-proof business, believe it or not. It really is. I mean, just in 2016, it was an eight-and-a-half-billion-dollar industry. That's just nails.
Ah.
It's just nails. That doesn't include facials, massages, or anything else. So, that, that tells you what kind of a...
I believe it.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm getting, I was getting calls in April from people who were asking me if I knew anyone who was, was available to come to their home and give them a manicure and a pedicure. But you know what I forgot? I forgot to identify myself. My name is Laurence, Laurence Patton, and my friends and colleagues call me Cookie. That's my nickname. And the address is 55 Roswell Street, Suite 110, Alpharetta, Georgia.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I am going to turn this over to the board for discussion and our emotion.
I don't know that I heard much that was objectionable and/or raised cause for concern in either the city's presentation or the applicant's presentation. Seems as though it's pretty straightforward.
Would you like to make a motion?
Well, I feel like I'd be doing a disservice to my counterpart who had to spend half of the meeting sequestered away, depriving him any opportunity to participate in the meeting.
How considerate.
I would like to say, I, I don't know a lot about nail salons, because I don't go, but my wife does, I know. And, but I do like the fact that it seems like you've put a lot of time and energy into this, to make this be something different. And if there's anything that we want in Alpharetta, we want things that are different, that are more unusual, that are more upscale. And so, I think that it seems like a really good concept, and I think that you'll do well there. I do hope so. I know there's a lot of nail salons around, but it seems like all of them manage to stay busy. So, I wish her the best for that.
Your presentation made me, made me want a pedicure.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve CU-21-01 slash V-21-01 "C'est vert" nails and spa at 55 Roswell Street.
Second.
As presented.
Second motion.
A motion has been made and properly seconded. Or any further discussion? Hearing none, or in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously, and it's going to go to council on January the 25th. Thank you for your presentation. We have one more item to consider. If you want to sit in and listen, and this is PH-20-18 Unified Development Code text amendments, North Point overlay. Kathy?
Thank you, Chairman. This is the last item before you. Consideration of text amendments to the Unified Development Code, Section 2.10.2, the North Point overlay use and density. And this is to amend the overlay boundaries and priority areas for density. The city council may authorize an increase to the residential density permitted in the underlying zoning district in conjunction with the request for conditional use permit for properties that are depicted in a priority area. And the only thing that's different for the priority area for residential is that we've added this area here with the purple star. And we're also expanding the limits of the North Point overlay. Doesn't make a lot of sense. We still can't figure out why, but in 2008, the original boundaries cut through some properties that have common ownership. So, what we're doing is adding on these little, the, the missing pieces, because this has the same, the same ownership. This is already within the North Point overlay. Same thing here. This is the piece of property that's at Haynes Bridge at Morrison. And it's the piece that was just cleared for the timber harvesting permit. But, but both of those pieces are same ownership, so both of them should be included within the North Point overlay. So, don't know how, you know, that happened back in, in 2008, and then we carried it over in 2018. So, those would be the three areas. And then here, this isn't common ownership, but really, if we have design standards for this front part that could possibly get redevelopment, redeveloped, then the, the entire piece should be within the, the overlay. Of course, anything that comes before the, the planning commission to make recommendations to council, and then council with the final decision, of course, any kind of a mixed-use residential, density, for sale, for rent, all of that would have to be judged on its own merits at that time. But we wanted to make those changes. We thought that they made sense to make those changes to the, the boundary and priority areas. And if you have any questions about that, I'd be glad to answer those.
Oh, I like that presentation. Short and sweet, Michael.
I actually had, I drove down that section south of Mansell. I had never actually even been in there. I mean, it's a surprisingly large piece of property back in there.
It is. And so, this is, this, it's actually zoned for office, up to 12-story office building at this intersection. But it's actually a beautiful piece of property when you go back there. If you get time, it, the Big Creek is actually the widest through there. So, it's, it's a really neat area, you know, and with the change in what we expect for office, this may be, you know, a better use as some type of a residential. Many different uses that could be even amenitized, using, you know, having a use there that, that utilizes the creek. So, it, it should be open for other opportunities, and I think that expanding the boundary helps with that.
Does the trail go through there?
The trail does. The, the Greenway Trail is here.
Yeah. I, I remember, it's a nice piece of property.
It's really nice. There's, it's, some of it's closed off right now because the, the bridge had flooded, and they are, Parks is working on that right now, so it'll be open. But as, there's three different restaurants that have closed, so we expect to see something different that will, that will be coming forward. Nothing submitted at this time, but, you know, when you have closers in, we don't know.
Yeah, that's a nice piece of property. Any questions from the board? Look straight forward to me. All right. What is the desire of the board?
I'll just make it a trifecta. Motion to approve PH-20-18 Unified Development Code text amendments, North Point overlay as presented. Do I need to read? No, I don't.
Second.
Seconded. A motion has, a motion has been made and properly seconded. Any further discussions? You ready to go home? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Any other items for discussion? Anything anyone would like to talk about? Hearing none. The meeting is adjourned, and we'll see you next time.